All right. Am I ready? All in order, the meeting of the Greenwood Common Council on Monday, June the 19th. We would please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance. After the pledge, please remain standing when we let in prayer this evening by Wayne Murray, lead pastor at Grace Assembly. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's great. Look, God, we thank you for a gift, another day. We thank you, Lord, because we know that you hold a breath in your hands and every good thing that we have comes from you. So we thank you for our city. We thank you for watching over us, for helping us, for providing for us, for giving us so many good things. Lord, we pray for this meeting tonight. We pray, Holy Spirit, that you would guide and direct every decision, every conversation. We pray, Lord, for our city today. We pray, Lord, that you would cover us, you would protect us. We pray, Lord God, that you would guide us. We pray for each of these council members tonight. We pray that they would have the gift of wisdom in their lives. We pray for your grace on their families. And we pray, Holy Spirit, that you would guide us in everything that we do. Your word says in Proverbs that many are the plans of a man's heart, but it's the Lord's purpose that prevails. That's what we're praying for today. We give this meeting to you. We're grateful in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. May be seated. Roll call.
Bates.
Present.
Bethron. Campbell.
Here.
Here. No.
Here.
Lexi.
Here. 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 We do have a board. All of you should have received copies of our minutes from the last regular meeting on June 5th. We have a motion, some of them, those from Mr. Bates, second, second one, Mr. Lexi. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? Here and then, roll call on the minutes. Aye.
Aye. Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Mill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Pennington.
Upstate.
And Williams.
Aye. Minutes are approved on the vote of eight, zero, and one abstentions. Reports, Corporation Council.
The semi-monthly report is available, Friday, it's available on your.
Do you remember the controller at this time?
Don't forget this time.
All of you should have received copies of my report from the last RBC meeting that I sent it out this afternoon. Have any questions? You never, committee of board reports?
Yes, Mr. President. I'd like to report that the fanatical center at the airport, we had the ribbon heavy and an open house on Saturday. It was well attended and just want you to note that that's moving along well, but that's especially important because the city has been very helpful to us.
Do you have a committee of board reports? All right, this time I will turn it over to the mayor.
Mr. President, council members, tonight we have the special occasion to swear in a few new firefighters and promote one. If you have permission, sir.
Yes.
So ladies and gentlemen, I want to thank you for counting family members who are any firefighters who have been sworn in. I always wanted to take a moment just to thank you for the opportunity to let your family members share with us to become a family member of the city of Greenwood. With our fire department, it's not just a department, we're a family. The city's a family. We work together as a family. We like to think of each other as a family. As we work together over the time, you know, we grow to know each other very well, to respect each other, and to work together very well. I also know that as firefighters, sometimes your job is very dangerous. It's very taxing upon them. And just want you to know that if you ever see a problem, you see a concern, you see the stress that they carry home, don't be afraid to reach out to the chief, to the deputy chief, to other members of the department, because we want to be here to support not only the firefighters themselves, but also the family members, because we are all one family. You are all now part of the family of Greenwood. So I thank you for that. I encourage you to watch over them and keep them, and we will do everything that we can do to train them to be the best firefighters we have in the state of Indiana. Is that chief, will you call it?
Sure. First member is Ryan Chalay. And the second firefighter we're swearing in is Taylor Raver.
Raise your right hand to repeat after me. I, stationing.
Aye.
Having been appointed physician, probationary firefighter, EMT. Firefighter, EMT.
EMT.
For the Greenwood Fire Department.
Fire Department.
Swear that I will obey.
Swear that I will obey.
And enforce.
And enforce.
All the laws.
All the laws.
Of the United States.
The United States.
The state of Indiana.
State of Indiana.
The ordinances of the city of Greenwood.
Orders of the city of Greenwood.
And the rules and regulations of Greenwood Fire Department.
The rules and regulations of Greenwood Fire Department.
And that I will obey.
And I will obey.
All the lawful orders.
All the lawful orders.
My superior officers.
My superior officers.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of said office.
And said office.
To the best of my bill.
To the best of my bill.
Congratulations, gentlemen.
Family members, here is going to pick your light cup forward. It's a tradition in the fire service for new firefighters to be pinned. Want to turn around for pictures? Take a few pictures. Congratulations, gentlemen. Mr. President, we're also promoting John Myers to the position of division chief of EMS. John.
He's not related to me, fortunately. But he's spelled correct. I, stationing.
Aye, John Myers.
Having been appointed physician, division chief of EMS.
Having been appointed to the position of division chief of EMS.
For the Greenwood Fire Department. Swear that I will obey.
Swear that I will obey.
And enforce.
And enforce.
All the laws.
All the laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
The state of Indiana.
The state of Indiana.
The ordinances of the city of Greenwood.
The ordinances of the city of Greenwood.
And the rules and regulations of Greenwood Fire Department.
The rules and regulations of Greenwood Fire Department.
And that I will obey.
And that I will obey.
All the lawful orders.
All the lawful orders.
Of my superior officers.
Of my superior officers.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
Of said office.
Of said office.
To the best of my.
To the best of my.
Big smile. Congratulations, gentlemen.
Thanks, sir. Thank you.
Those family council members, thank you for the time.
We're always happy to have you all. Let us be a part of your swearing in service today. All right, this is a time we set aside in our agenda for members of the audience to address the council concerning items that are on tonight's agenda. So if you'd like to do so, please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and there is a five-minute time limit for speaker.
Good evening, council members, neighbors. I'm Randy Gooden. Address is 1157 Central Park Boulevard, South Greenwood, Indiana 46143. Stand before you tonight on behalf of ordinance 2317. And it is the rezoning of the 23.9 acres out of northeast corner of Worsville and Collins Road. And the reason I stand before you is because of some of the zoning that they're asking for. As many of you know, over the last several years, just over six pound, we've been trying to slow the encroachment of industrial development towards Worsville Road area. And while this property and this industrial zoning they're asking for doesn't exactly, but to Worsville, it is just to the north of it. It's just to the north of what they're requesting for the commercial large zoning. As this pushes forward, I'm sure it will, please be mindful of this area. And the neighbors have said, if you look at their forms, the neighbors have said just to the east of them in a brand-new development that is being put out there. The industrial zoning that they're asking for, or say only have to be 40 feet from that property line with their buffering. This, from what they had watched before, the plant commission would likely be a warehouse. Granted, they did face the docks south, so that there wouldn't be as much noise issued over into that community. But when you look at the number of docks, how many semi-tractor trailers will be pulling in and out of there at a 24/7 business? The amount of noise, the amount of pollution, and anyone that's a research knows that diesel has a tendency to aggravate asthma, and anyone has any type of breathing issues. This will all drift, diesel drips, the fumes will drift well over 350 fumes. And this is going to have a significant impact. So as this moves forward, I would ask that we consider reducing this from industrial large to an industrial medium, or ask for commitments on the buffering and ways that will control the noise, the drift, and the lighting on the industrial properties. The commercial, all I would ask is standard considerations for buffering the lighting. I did talk to the petitioner after this came before the common council. I did ask for a commitment for gas stations with convenience stores that would not commit to that. So we know that that is a possibility of going in and out of that location. And I understand that there's a need for it, but there's also a need for other things such as restaurants that are badly needed in that area, especially for anyone that's working up in the current warehousing or industry that is up in the current industrial park. Other than that, every time.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the council at this time? All right, seeing none. On ordinance's resolutions, notice of intent to consider ordinance number 2315.
An ordinance to amend the official zoning map adopted by referencing by development ordinance number 2029, those are zoning approximately two acres located at the southwest corner of Sierra Drive and North Washington Avenue, sponsored by Lexi.
Anyone wishing to speak to this?
Here are the orders to this property, and we have asked for a change from IL industrial to IC industrial commercial.
Excuse me. Did you give us your name and address?
Oh, I'm sorry. Marsha Clapper. My address is 228 Capitol Drive, Indianapolis, 46227.
Thank you.
Back to, we own the property. We bought it years ago for the state of Indiana to build five offices on it. Well, that kind of fell apart. So we've had it in the property for a long time, and that were the ones that got it out of the 100-year flood zone, because that whole thing in there was 100-year flood zone. Lately, we had a hopper from a dentist that was building over there, and we accepted the offer. Well, his funding fell apart, but we decided to go ahead with the rezoning because the industrial commercial is much more in line with what's on Anderson Avenue than warehousing. To be honest with you, we have 10 buildings in town. We could be better with it, with industrial warehouses. We make more money. But that's not fair to the other people around there. There's lawyers, there's a daycare across the street, the St. Francis has some offices, and we feel it's more fair to the community to go ahead with the industrial commercial zone. Do you have any questions?
Any questions? All right, thank you.
I'm here for any questions for staff. This was favorably recommended to you from plant commission, the advisory commission. The United States, 6-0 recommendation to you. Staff is also favorable of this recommendation. We feel like it's more appropriate to have the IC interstate commercial zone opposed to the IL industrial large zone, which is our most intensive industrial zone. Staff did recommend two commitments to plant commission, which they included in their recommendation as well. Do you have any questions? I'm here to answer you.
So I may finish the act first before we start. Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Hopper of a second.
Second.
Second one, Ms. Gibson. All right. Any discussion on the council?
So I promised to look at all the interstate commerce uses after the last meeting. The only one I would exclude is self-storage, mostly because there's already self-storage to south there. There's another one across the street, not too far from there as well, and we don't need a thousand self-storage right there in that area. So I'll make a motion to exclude self-storage.
A motion of Mr. Hopper to exclude self-storage. Do you have a second?
Sure.
Second one, Mr. Lexi. Any discussion on the council? Do we need to? Is that something that the petitioner would be in agreement with?
I believe we should ask the petitioner if they're willing to place that commitment on a given property, that it would not be developed as self-storage or a storage business.
All right.
There's already enough of those around there.
There's enough of those around there.
You want to serve on a board of commissioners? Or do I hear that you are in Indianapolis?
All right, all right. So we have a motion to exclude the self-storage and the rezoning. And a second, any discussion on the council concerning the amendment? Here and then, the roll call on the amendment to ordinance 2315.
Bates.
Aye.
Bethron. Aye. Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Mill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Pennington.
Aye.
And Wood.
Aye. Ordinance 2315 is amended over vote nine to zero. Any discussion on ordinance 2315 as amended? Here and then, the roll call, ordinance 2315.
Bethron. Aye. Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Mill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Pennington.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
And Bates.
Aye.
Ordinance 2315 as amended passes over vote nine to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ordinance 2317.
An ordinance to amend the official zoning map adopted by reference to unified development ordinance number 20-29, those are zoning approximately 23.9 acres located at the northeast corner of Worsville Road and Collins Road, sponsored by Hopper.
I have a motion. Motion of Mr. Hopper of a second.
Second.
Second one, Mr. Hill. Anybody wishing to speak to this one?
Pleasant Campbell, members of the council. My name is Brian Tewey. My address is 50 South Briney. I represent the petitioner in 2023-031, which is a big ordinance, number 23-17. Thank you for your time in hearing our case. Here with me tonight is Dr. John Shalosky. He's the director of human resources from the Clark Pleasant School Corporation. We also have a now from Dr. Spray, who's superintendent of schools at Clark Pleasant School Corporation. I pass it out to board. I wouldn't have had it in my presentation, but I just got it this afternoon. And also Matt Brower, the vice president of Peterson Company, and Matt Brown, a traffic engineer from A&amp;F Engineering. And again, thanks for your time. I'll make a brief presentation if that's the desire of the council.
Yes.
So this is a 29-acre site roughly. It's at the northeast corner of Worsville Road and Collins Road, as shown on this exhibit. To the north of it, as you're well aware, there's a number of industrial locations. South of it, there's open farm fields. To the west, there's the farmer's market in I-65. And to the east is some land that's currently being developed. What's interesting about this site is the school actually owns 40 acres, but the petitioner's only going to rezone about 29 of those, and I'll show you how that's going to work. Petition to rezone is to two distinct zoning classifications. Up at the north, 23 acres would, it's been requested to be rezoned to IL. To the south on the corner, it's been requested to be zoned to 5.89 acres. This is a picture of a site looking north, looking north of Collins Road. That's Worsville Road running left to right. That's the, one of the Amazon facilities in the background there. This is the farmer's market on the corner, exactly opposite of where they proposed to rezone it to the commercial zoning. This is a picture looking south of the site to the southwest. That's the southwest corner of that intersection, and that's the southeast corner, and the site is in the area that's being tilled and with those white lines in that site photograph. As you can see, there's IL zoning to the north of the site, and you can see in the green what we do, what we propose is to zone IL next to IL, just south of Grand Road, and then south, as you come down to Worsville, it would be CL zoning. The idea is to have the industrial next to the industrial and step that use down to the CL right on the corner. This is the site plan that shows how it could be developed, certainly preliminary, but the top part of that site plan shows the IL zoning, and the bottom part in the left-hand side shows a commercial outline. We certainly respect the gentleman that spoke here a few minutes ago, Mr. Gooden. We talked to him after the hearing my clients did. He mentioned the need for restaurants. We certainly agree the CL will allow that. There are some new convenience stores that are coming into the Naxx area. Leo's Market is one that I've seen where there's, it's a 7,000-foot market, so it's a mini grocery store. It serves fresh food, fresh vegetables. It's different than what we're used to in Speedway, whole Speedway gas station, not doing anything wrong of that, but that certainly could be a use for, given all the people that are employed around this area. You could have a CBS, you could have a number of retail outlets on a five-acre site. We don't know exactly what it will be, but the idea is to have that corner be retail. The interesting part of that exhibit, though, is in the corner next to Worsville Road, developer has elected to leave that large area, remain zone AG, and so that would not be developed. We're about 800 feet from our nearest residential neighbor, and that 800 feet is separated by that green area, that area is labeled area to remain, being zone AG. Certainly, the use is going to change from a farm field to something that's developed, but I think they've given pretty careful consideration in keeping a distance between this site and their neighbors. This is how the site would essentially look. It's developed in that fashion. Again, you can see two things that I would respectfully actually note. Note that the tree line along the right side of that proposed development, I think there's about four acres of trees there. That would stay there. We have no development rights or interest in that. And the southern area, there's about three acres of trees there. I've got another exhibit that will show that. Just exhibit. So, so below the IL site, on our site, we've got about three and a half acres of trees that will remain in place. That's that onsite tree area, 3.52. Then Mr. Gooden mentioned the neighbors to the east of the industrial site. Two things I'd point out. One, there's no dock door spacing that way. And two, there's a four-plus acre stand of trees between the edge of that proposed industrial building, which may or may not be like that, between us and the future lots. Again, just pointing out, there's some substantial screening in areas that will remain undeveloped on this site with this rezone. The comprehensive plan, it's in the Worsville Road interchange plan. Part of the plan calls for five acres right there in the corner to be zoned retail. We are proposing that, but that's something interesting that in your, in your own plan here, produced several years ago, it states the Clark Pleasant School Corporation is owned 40 acres at the corner of Collins and Worsville Road. The Clark Pleasant School Corp does not see this as the best location for another school facility, but additional long-term planning will continue to take place where the best location for our school is. A more appropriate location for a school facility would be located within what the residential areas east of Collins Road, not here at Worsville. That was confirmed at the plant commission hearing by a gentleman named Austin Frud, who was the chief financial officer, who spoke at the plant commission hearing in favor of this. It's been confirmed by an email from Dr. Spray, which I handed to you. And as I mentioned, the John Shalosky, I want to make sure that it's being pronounced correctly, the director of human resources, just here if there's any questions about the school's view of this. In short, the school supports this. Our staff, we appreciate working with, your staff with very capable planners. They were very accommodating and appreciated working with it. They did ask for five commitments. The petitioner agreed to all five of those, and the staff gave a favorable recommendation based on those commitments. Those are outlined here, include the street improvements, there'd be site access points to meet the traffic study recommendations. Traffic study concluded that there would not be adverse effects by this development, that we would install trails. Then we eliminated certain uses that the staff asked us to eliminate. Additionally, this will bring utilities, water utilities, to this area, which apparently is a substantial expenditure on the part of the developer. Traffic report in sum concludes that all the intersections in this area will continue to operate at acceptable level of services. Certainly, there will be increased traffic, but these intersections, according to A&amp;F Engineering, are capable of inputting the traffic in this development. Summary, the zoning allows for industrial commercial uses, with the industrial to be limited to the area next to existing industrial, commercial uses to be down on the corner of Worsville Road and Collins Road. It's, the site's owned by the school corporation. They wanted to sell it. It's an enormous investment on that corner. It's $25 to $30 million in a vacant site, currently members of the council generates no taxable income, has no real assessed value to the community because it's owned by the school corporation. The development allowed extension of water lines along Collins. We agreed to all the staff's requested commitments, and the planning staff has made a favorable recommendation. And on June 2nd, the plant commission will present a recommendation. Would greatly appreciate your favorable consideration of our petition. We'll try and answer questions if I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Tewey?
There's something on the, on the map of the layout of the industrial, am I correct? And that is an entrance, exit right there before the entrance to the neighborhood of the northwest corner?
That's correct. Yes, sir. I think that would be the northeast corner. Yes, sir. That, now we have to come back before the plant commission to get site plan approval. So this is. So this is, please be conceptual in nature, and we have to, we have to show the commission that our entrance is next, it's, but it does show.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any discussion on the council, ordinance 2317? Do you hear for questions? Just questions, we have comments?
I'm just here in case you have questions, I think Brian covered it well. As he said, staff is favorable with recommendations. We also have favorable recommendations from the Director of the Planning Commission. There was, for that vote, there was a heat to one vote.
All right, council, any questions, comments, discussion? Right, hearing on the roll call, ordinance 2317.
Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Mary.
Middleton.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Bickham.
Aye.
And Campbell.
All right, ordinance 2317 fails to pass in vote of 36. Ordinance 2318.
An ordinance amending the test ordinance 20-29, you provide building ordinance are 25 Division 2, Section 10, O231, flood hazard overlay district correct type graphical error sponsored by.
A little motion. So, motion Mr. Bates, second. Second by Mr. Hopper. Any discussion?
You probably don't need me for this one, these are clerical errors. It was approved by DNR as written. They had come back and said that they would like some indentations and punctuation, basically. It almost be script in their errors, but that is what we're here for you. There's no words being, words or meanings being changed, it's just punctuation.
All right, any questions, any discussion on the council?
So the DNR is the one that requesting this change?
Yes, they requested the previous change, approved it, and then came back to us and requested some minor tweaks to it, and staff is, staff and planning commission are favorable that you recommend this, so that we're good graces with DNR and DNR.
All right, any other questions? Hearing on the roll call, ordinance 2318.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Middleton.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Bickham.
Aye.
And Campbell.
All right, ordinance 2318 passes, although nine to zero. Ordinance 2319.
An ordinance amending common council ordinance number 21-43, rezoning at 6.57 acres located at 1464 West St. Cross Road, NJH Holdings LLC, and Amanda Kind Johnson Property, and then it's as modulated.
So, motion Mr. Bates, second.
Second.
Mr. Williams. Mr., any questions, any discussion? Everybody know what we're doing? All right. So, just so I'm clear, because we had exclusions, so this ordinance reads a little different. Oh, it's still an exclusion for mixed-use development when done in conjunction with any type of residential or lodging use, otherwise any mixed-use, this is correct. Yes. Right, any discussion? Hearing on the roll call, ordinance 2319.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Hopper.
Middleton.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Bickham.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
And Gibson.
Aye.
Ordinance 2319 passes in a vote of nine to zero. First reading, first reading, ordinance 2316.
An ordinance vacating flat of detention easement in the replat lot E Greenberg Park, sponsored by Campbell.
Have a motion, so, Mr. Hopper, second, sorry, second by Mr. Lexi. This is scheduled for a public hearing, so we will open it now for public hearing, and if you are here tonight, wish to speak for or against ordinance number 2316, please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Jackie, you can just wait until after we close the public hearing.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. All right, seeing none, then, close the public hearing.
Jackie Graves, 1478 Eagle Trace Drive, Greenwood, Indiana. County line properties purchased 7.7 acres and blocked the E Greenwood Park in 2017, with intentions to develop a property. The plant at that time provided for drainage with a detention easement in the northwest corner of the parcel. In 2020, county line properties began working with Smith Packet out of Roland Oak, Virginia, to bring Harmony at Greenwood, which is an upscale senior living community, to the 7.7 acre parcel. We've been working with planning, Greenwood planning, PC 2022 101 and 2022 102. This site plan provides for drainage at the south end of the parcel with the new site plan. Petitioners requesting detention, vacation of the detention easement in the original block.
All right, any questions?
Thank you.
Any discussion on the council? Hearing on the roll call, ordinance 2316, first reading.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Middleton.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Bickham.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
And Hill.
All right, ordinance 2316 passes first reading, nine to zero. Second reading, Resolution 2307.
The resolutions of the Grand County Council of Dr. R. Jacob Science for the annexation of approximately 0.97 acres located at 13.1 West Smith Valley Road, are 14 annexation ordinance number 2314, sponsored by Hopp.
No wish to speak to this, so. Now, a motion by Mr. Hopper, do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bates. Does anybody want to talk about this?
Yes.
And I believe your comments are probably applicable to ordinance 2314 as well, is that correct?
Correct. Good evening, I'm Alan Hampson, 5572, Rosebeak Drive, Freeman, Indiana, 46243. I'm a petitioner in this property, once again, we'll get you back. I have a few slides to go through to kind of show you, this is how I came to purchase the property and what guided my decisions in doing so. This is the comprehensive plan, which I'm sure you've seen, and it's hard to see here, but the properties located right there were my arrows, zoom in here, you can see the green comprehensive plan has identified this parcel as being future use of commercial, whereas this comprehensive plan was created in 2007. Further, I know we're not, this is not Johnson County agreement, but Johnson County has also identified this parcel with the widening of Smith Valley Road and addition of I-69 corridor as, any properties through there where Smith Valley could affect, especially with the widening of Smith Valley, that those should be considerate, have strong consideration for commercial use. And as I'll show you in some follow-up pictures, this property is very close to the road compared to other residential properties, and will definitely be impacted by Smith Valley. Therefore, having a commercial use would be very much more, or less of an impact than what it would be if it was residential property. And going back to Greenwood's comprehensive plan, you can see down in the highlighted section, it talks about suburban communities and how we have a lack of some suburban commercial areas in Greenwood. And particularly, it talks about some congestion in the area, which I know was a concern before. And by allowing commercial in the areas where congestion occurs and allowing for walkability in those areas, it can reduce the congestion in keeping them out of the bigger, more, more traffic areas of the city. And further to show, you can kind of see here where the setback is for this property, how it's closest to Smith Valley, and as residential homes, that could more impact this property being commercially, be much less of an impact in the future. In addition, you can see the walkway that is really impeding the walkability of the area currently. And then, from the area perspective, you could see where the city has planned this to be connected at some point, but as a residential home, going back, you can see that there's no way that this would be connected with a residential property, and clearly they planned for this to be connected at some point. As a first property, this would be able to be connected, making it walkable, and helping to keep or subtract and help with that. So, to shift a little bit, just for your perspective, this is the view of the home from Shepherd's Grove, where a lot of the people had some issues with the property. You can see, this is from the backyard of the property, you can see the Yeager Office Building on the left side to the east of the property, and the proximity to Shepherd's Grove. Now, with the Yeager Office Building there is currently, currently any setback, whereas I would be required to follow the zoning ordinance and the 30 to 40-foot setback on property. Any potential building that I'm going to be doing on properties, there's not going to be any additional building on the property currently under, with plans that we have in place. So, and if you look in this picture, you can see some of the reflections in there, you can see the windows that are looking down on these properties in Shepherd's Grove. So here's another vantage point, you can kind of see how close the Yeager Office Building is on that commercial site compared to residential areas. And then from, again, the Yeager Building, you can see the roofs, the Yeager Building doesn't have any type of buffering there, it's very minimal, whereas I'll be required to follow the current ordinance as it plays and have 30 to 40 feet of buffering. So lastly, this is the property in red, question, you can see, this is when the properties, the Yeager property was there in 2008, Home Depot 2001, and then we have the two prospective strip centers there, built in 2005 and 2006, all residential ones that order those properties were built in 2018 and 2020. So the Yeager Office Building that shares property lines with these homes could become a gas station, car service center, event center, fast food drive-through, hospital, hotel, even a shooting range. So it's reasonable to expect that when a home is purchased sharing property lines with a commercial property, commercial activity will follow. So in fact, say you agree with identifying my property specifically as future commercial, with that information being available to the public all the way back to 2007, only allowing professional services in this location does not insulate neighboring properties from things that they're concerned about, but our city officials have spent a lot of time writing or revising something at will, and that is the zoning ordinances that will be followed. So this property should be zoned commercial medium, I'm willing to do it proper value by only allowing commercial small uses, which eliminates all of those potential uses that I mentioned on my property that are allowed at the neighboring office building with the same zoning. So I don't wish to dilute property further by allowing only two specific uses. So in fairness, I request that when we go today, it's for the property to be rezoned as commercial medium, conceding that only commercial small uses will be allowed as loaded on in the planning department meeting. So thank you. Any questions or can I answer?
Any questions for Mr. Hampson? I know I wasn't here for the last meeting when all those commitments were added, is there anything that was added to prevent heightening the, like, going to two stories? So it goes along those houses right there? I mean, I know we've talked about the uses, but you talked about how the current office building, the windows can look down, is there anything that's very specific happening here? It'd be our current zoning, I don't know what the height is for. I believe it, yeah, I also want to speak at a turn.
In the CM zone, which is what he's correcting, 45 feet is the maximum height.
But it is limited to commercial small uses with that, with the CM maximum height applied?
So it, it would limit the uses, not the height. You would like to know the height of buildings in that commercial small zone, it is 35 feet.
Here's my issue, right? He came to us, said he wanted to come in the city, wants two uses to use this building for, he says he's going to use this building. Now it sounds like you're talking about potential buildings, which means you're going to tear this one down, put something in, and it also sounds like you're kind of speculating on this land that you want to use it for something else, 169, that's what it sounds like to me. So if you don't agree to the commitments that I put on, or to everybody, both know, you can stay out of the county. Any other comments or questions on the council?
I just, I do believe that the building height was brought up by council, so it's not something that the petitioner brought before you.
Need an explanation of the actions we took at the last council meeting, so.
Well, the actions of 2014 were currently business 23-7, so I can explain on 23-14 that the consequences of adding the commitment to that right, I feel premature, that matters not properly forward to council.
That is true. All right, so Resolution 2307 is simply adopting the written fiscal plan for the annexation, it's not the actual annexation, so. Any other comments or questions on Resolution 2307? Hearing on the roll call, second reading, Resolution 2307.
Lexi.
Aye.
Middleton.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Bickham.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
And Hopper.
Aye. Resolution 2307 passes in a vote of eight to one, as a second reading. Ordinance 2313.
An ordinance amending the 2023 salary ordinance, Common Council Ordinance Number 2227, to change titles and salaries of the regular supervisors, fill-in administrator, and chief assistant position in police department sponsored by Hopp.
A little motion, so, motion Mr. Hopper, second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Gibson, sorry. Any discussion on the council? Hearing on the roll call, ordinance 2313, second reading.
Middleton.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Bickham.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye. All right, ordinance 2313 passes second reading, nine to zero. Ordinance 2314.
An ordinance annexing certain territory continues to the city of Greenwood, Indiana, consistent with corporate boundaries, making it part of the city agreement, redefining corporate boundaries of the city agreement in Indiana, including approximately 0.97 acres located at 13.1 West Smith Valley Road, sponsored by Hopp.
A little motion, so, motion by Mr. Hopper, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bates, or Mr. Williams, sorry. All right, any discussion, ordinance 2314, I think most of the things that were presented on Resolution 2307, applying to 2314, but explain.
All right, so the situation we have is kind of twofold, there's the annexation, and then there's the rezoning. They kind of operate separate from each other. Mr. Hopper added commitments, which the landlord did not consent to, so unless he consents to those, it's not actually affecting, because the planning commission is one that cites commitments. If Mr. Hopper did something that lowered the standards from what the planning commission did, then that would go back to planning commission. If you vote on it and it's approved with the commitments, and that he doesn't agree to it, so, the land still is annexed to the city, it's annexed in as residential large, so it won't be commercial, and that will have those uses that are with residential large.
large. If you guys vote against it, then it just remains in the county. If it does come into the city residential large, it'll stay residential large until such time he agrees to write the bylaws that commitments Mr. Hopper put on.
So we vote on it as is, and he does not agree to the commitments that were placed on it. It's annexed in as residential large.
Yes, sir.
And we vote against it. It's just not annexed or obviously resolved.
Correct.
Okay. Any questions about that? Any discussion?
I I did just want to mention for petitioners, he can still withdraw the petition as well. That is an additional option that we have. It's not an option that you guys can take, but it's an option that he can take, which would be the same as you guys basically rejected the annexation.
So just one clarification. If it's withdrawn, he can reapply any time. If it's voted down, he has to wait a year, if I'm understanding.
Correct. He could reapply if it's withdrawn. If it's voted down, the zoning for it does have a year cooling off period unless my commission were to unanimously approve him to come back or unless he made a substantial change or went to a different zone. He could try in a different zone possibly, but this is the zone that fits the size of his property for commercial.
All right. Thank you. Any questions or discussion on the council? Hearing none, then roll call, ordinance twenty-three fourteen, second reading.
Williams.
Bates.
Bates.
Nate.
Fettah. Nate. Campbell.
Nate.
Gibson.
May.
Bill.
Nate.
Hopper.
Nate.
Lexi.
Mary.
And Middleton.
Nate. Ordinance twenty-three fourteen fails to pass with a vote of zero to nine. New business introduction, new orders, resolutions, ordinance number twenty-three twenty.
An ordinance transferring funds within the general fund to the legal department for budget category one-one-one, sixty-seven thousand dollars for budget category three-three-one for legal services sponsored by Gibson.
Good evening. Greg Wright, City Controller. This budget transfer is related to city attorney Joe Saylor is going to a contractual agreement rather than a city attorney employee of the city. He is wanting to do some additional work that require him to not be a city employee. So from the city side, things this seems to obviously have benefits. The amount that will be paid on that contract, which was approved by Board of Works earlier this evening, is actually less than the the salary. So we benefit, but we lose him on Tuesdays and then on Thursday morning. So that's why the the amount paid would down some, but he's going to be doing some defense capital work.
Any questions?
I just want, what question? Does this needs to be expedited in any fashion?
Um, this one, if we could do suspension through first, by the time we get the first bill from him, we should be through the second one and have everything.
I'll make that motion and suspend rules.
Okay. We have a motion of Mr. Bates to suspend the rules of ordinance twenty-three twenty through first reading and a second prime with Ms. Gibson. Any discussion on suspension? Hearing none, then roll call, suspension of the rules through first reading, ordinance twenty-three twenty.
Bates.
Hi.
Fettah. Hi. Campbell.
Hi.
Gibson. Um, Bill.
Hi.
Hopper.
Hi.
Lexi.
All right.
Middleton.
All right.
And Williams.
Hi.
Rules are suspended in first reading on ordinance twenty-three twenty and a vote of nine to zero. A motion for second. So, sorry. Rules are suspended. A motion for first reading by Mr. Bates at a second.
Second.
Second, Ms. Gibson. Any discussion? Hearing none, then roll call, ordinance twenty-three twenty, first reading.
Fettah. Hi. Campbell.
Hi.
Gibson. Hi. Bill.
Hi.
Hopper.
Hi.
Lexi.
Hi.
Middleton.
Hi.
Williams.
Hi.
And Bates.
Hi.
Ordinance twenty-three twenty passes first reading with a vote of nine to zero. Ordinance twenty-three twenty-one.
An ordinance amending the twenty-twenty-three salary ordinance, common council ordinance number twenty-two twenty-seven, to change one code enforcement officer position to a code enforcement supervisor position sponsored by HOP.
Good evening. Greg Wright, City Controller. So this new position was created this evening at the Board of Works meeting. As you're all probably well aware, this is peak code enforcement season. The workload is pretty significant in that that area and the administration determined that that we do need someone in a supervisory position in that area in order to to keep up with the workload. So we are asking if you would consider suspending all the way through so that we can get that going as quickly as possible. Like I said, code enforcement's pretty busy right now. We want to make sure that we are as efficient as we can be with it.
All right. We do have a request for suspension of the rules through first reading. A motion. Motion, Mr. Hopper. I'm sorry. I have a motion for suspension through first reading by Ms. Gibson. A second by Mr. Hopper. Any discussion on suspension of the rules? Hearing none, then roll call, suspension of the rules through first reading with ordinance twenty-three twenty-one.
Campbell.
Hi.
Gibson. Hi. Bill.
Hi.
Hopper.
Hi.
Lexi.
Hi.
Middleton.
Hi.
Williams.
Hi.
Bates.
Hi.
Fettah. Hi.
Rules are suspended through first reading, ordinance twenty-three twenty-one, with a vote of nine to zero. A motion for first reading.
So moved.
Second motion by Ms. Gibson, second by Mr. Bates. Any discussion? Hearing none, then roll call, ordinance twenty-three twenty-one, first reading.
Gibson. Hi. Bill.
Hi.
Hopper.
Hi.
Lexi.
Hi.
Middleton.
Hi.
Williams.
Hi.
Bates.
Hi.
Fettah. Hi.
Hi. Ordinance twenty-three twenty-one passes first reading nine to zero. A motion for suspensions through second reading. A motion by Mr. Bates. Second by Ms. Gibson. Any discussion on suspension? Hearing none, then roll call, suspension of the rules, ordinance twenty-three twenty-one, through second reading.
Bill.
Hi.
Hopper.
Hi.
Lexi.
Hi.
Middleton.
Hi.
Williams.
Hi.
Bates.
Hi.
Fettah. Hi. Campbell.
Hi.
And Gibson. Hi.
Rules are suspended through second reading, vote of nine to zero. Motion for second reading.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Gibson, second. Sir, second by Mr. Lexi. Any discussion?
Just one. When does that one of this start? Immediately?
Yeah, yeah, we would. We would immediately start that if it's for this.
Sure. Any other questions? Hearing none, roll call, ordinance twenty-three twenty-one, second reading.
Hopper.
Hi.
Lexi.
Hi.
Middleton.
Hi.
Williams.
Hi.
Bates.
Hi.
Fettah. Hi. Campbell.
Hi.
Gibson. Hi. And Bill.
Ordinance twenty-three twenty-one passes second reading with a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you very much.
Ordinance twenty-three twenty-two.
An ordinance amending the agreement fire department merit system to change maximum age for appointments sponsored by Campbell.
Good evening again. Brad Coy, Assistant Fire Chief. On May first, Governor Hulkup signed into law a change instead of a one-eight-five, which increases the maximum age of our police and fire mission. And so this ordinance would amend our current merit condition to match what the state ordinance is. It will go from not yet thirty-nine or thirty-six years old to not yet forty years. So it's just a change in wording.
Any questions? Thank you. Resolution twenty-three oh eight.
Resolution declaring certain area within the city of Greenwood, an economic prioritization area, while my certain real property improvements for tax payment and setting the time and place for public hearing, given part two LLC sponsored by Hopper and Campbell.
Sure. Good evening. Pat Sherman, House of Representatives, representing the petitioners. We have these packages in. Giving part building number two. This is a a commercial building that is on Emerson Avenue, just north of the current building that Gray Allen has built, that will be identical to that. This is situated just in front of the good little facility there on Emerson Avenue. So it's a request for the ten-year payment. The investment in the facility. It's going to be twenty-eight thousand eight hundred square feet. It'll be similar in population to what the current building is there, which is medical based on this use. Their investment, real estate, it's about like two-point-four and improvements is going to be a little over seven-point-two million. The end will be identical to the building that's just south of that. It's going to be developed by J. Gray Allen's company through.
You have, just out of curiosity, do you know what the wages are, the average wages are in the Kirk building? I know it's medical.
It seemed like we just did that C of one. It's around twenty-six or higher. Because there's a lot of medical.
All right. I was just curious. All right. Any questions, Mr. Sherman?
Mine kind of goes along with that where it's listed as a speculative building with ninety-three jobs and nineteen-fifteen hours.
Yes, it is a speculative building, and that's based upon the hourly rate of the other building, but that doesn't equal to any vacation. Any? President, we'd like to request, we'd like to get this building started quickly before they get here. Request suspension of just the first reading so that we can get this process started so they can start the process.
Do you have a request for suspension of the rules through first reading? A motion? Some of the motion to Mr. Hopper, second.
Second.
Second on Ms. Gibson. Any discussion with suspension?
Well, it says there's a public hearing scheduled for July seventeenth, so a public hearing will give us a few of that.
Well.
That's that's with, as I was understanding, that's with the suspension of the first reading, introduction first reading.
Yeah, you're right. That's two meetings now. Normal schedule, public group schedule for next week.
Still. Seven days, though, so it may still be four.
Shouldn't be enough time now. Would we have enough time to reschedule the public hearing to the fifth?
Hopefully, we have to have the ERA to the suburbs of the public hearing, so I think.
But if that's the case, then suspending the rules wouldn't really help you. Because we'll do first reading on the fifth and second reading on the seventeenth, which we'll have to have a meeting.
So we can't be having a public hearing and the second reading.
Yeah. Yeah, we can do. That would be the normal process.
Mr. Sherman's asking if the second meeting can be moved up to the fifth, I think.
Well, the public hearing, that's what we were just, this beast was saying, is you have to have something else prepared.
No, I think the the ERA has to be approved.
So you you would be ready for the public hearing on the fifth and with the seventh year? Is that possible?
Um, if we can get those out into the paper, they're taking the demarcation. That's the, I don't know if it's possible to move that up to the board, the attorney, the page.
Well. If we can do that, then we can suspend the rules at the next meeting through second reading. And then finish it up at the next meeting on July fifth, if they can get a public notice ready. So let's wait and do that instead of doing it tonight.
Yeah.
I I gotta do this. And then we'll work to try to get the public hearing scheduled for the fifth. If we can, then we can suspend the rules through second reading. And if we can't, then we'll just follow the normal process. Or at least we'll we'll take a vote on suspension. I will promise that we will.
I appreciate your time.
Yes. Yes, thank you.
Anything to cover up that good, well, I can explain by hand. I don't know what to say. I'm correct, so we'll all get. Remember, it needs to be two stories.
All right. Resolution twenty-three oh nine.
Resolution for the agreement, common council, for interlocal agreement with Johnson County, regarding federal transit administration section, security of seven public transit grant, local match contribution and related matters sponsored by Gibson.
Want to talk about this one? All right. Moving on, miscellaneous business. This is the second opportunity for members of the public to address the council concerning items that are not on tonight's agenda. If you'd like to do so, please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and there is a five-minute time limit for process. If you want to talk to us, now's the time.
My name is Sandra Katie Heimer, and I go by my middle name Kay. I live at nine-seventy Maple Grove Drive, three meeting in four-six-one-four-three. And the Garrett Company has purchased the property behind my home. And from what I understand, at one of your meetings, I do have a shed that is placed on the easement, which is outside of my property. And at the time that I had it installed, I had no idea that I would have any problems with it. At your meeting, it was stated that my shed does not have been moved or any of my papers. The Garrett Company has sent us a letter to be notified. They've sent a second one for us to be to get it notified. And they're asking that I either move my shed or I need insurance. Since the shed is not on my property, it would have to be commercial insurance, which is quite expensive. I have checked with the gentleman about moving my shed. He cannot do anything on it for at least three months. And I do have pictures of my property. There is seventeen feet between my shed and their property line. Since it's on the easement, which from what I understand is on my, on my gridlet, I don't understand how I would have to move my shed. It's not on their property, what they call it, and the roach. If if the council would leave, I just want to get it settled. I I wanted to make sure that I treated fairly and they're treating fairly. If I do have to move my shed, I will I will do so. If I don't have to, it would really be nice to leave it there. It's not causing any problems. You can still get through there behind my property. And from what I understand, they're approved at eight-foot wall to go on their property to buy this. From what I understand, that's first to that first, but so far we haven't done that. But I I would just want to make sure that I'm doing what I'm supposed to do as a homeowner. If I have to move that shed, I will do so. It might take me some time. Not sure what the expense would be, but I know I can't afford the insurance, which they're asking for. I I don't have all the copies of the letter that they sent to me, but I do have the one that is asking for insurance. If you need to see that, I did take a copy of that. And I have pictures of my property that I have printed off, if you need to see that.
I might have a copy of the letter.
Okay. I don't have all of the sheets. I'm sorry. I did not know that I needed to have a copy.
No, no, that's all right. Just if if you don't have a copy now, you can email it.
I I do have a copy of of what you call on the insurance, and I've got a copy of my property line.
Um.
Mr. Nelson can speak to that.
No, so if you have anything to say, it's cool.
Okay. No, and you can also have these copies of my property also.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Do I leave with this, lady?
You can just leave it with, uh, the clerk, yes. I will, I will.
I appreciate you taking the time.
Thank you for coming, letting us know.
So if you're buying this, I can answer right away. See what I, you might end up last week.
Uh, so I, I've not seen, I guess, the updated letter with the request for insurance. I do know that letters were sent out to the property owners who had sheds that were not on their property, but actually on the Garrett Company's property. Those sheds were likely placed off their property and they did not receive approval at the time that they had a shadow. And there is also a drainage easement back there, uh, that typically, uh, if you were to be putting up a shed right now, we would request an encroachment request. Uh, so I assume that they probably have some concerns with the shed, uh, being on their property that is inside of a drainage easement, which we would not typically allow in Greenwood. Um, that is my assumption. I know that the shed, these were only sent out to properties with, uh, sheds on the Garrett Company. The agreement that I previously saw, uh, was a very standard document that basically says, you know, if the shed is destroyed, you can't rebuild it off of your property. And, uh, it also talks about if someone were to be injured in the shed or on the shed, that that injury, uh, they would be liable for it and not the Garrett Company who is allowing them to keep the shed on Garrett, uh, on the Garrett Company property, which these people, uh, do not own, but they're trying to create an agreement to allow them to keep their sheds there if they would like them there.
I have a question, a clarification. She mentioned that the, uh, property was, or the shed was on an easement and the city Greenwood owned easement, and that's not correct.
Correct.
You know, we don't know that, that the easement is on Garrett's property?
Uh, the easement is on her property, but some of the, um, some of the sheds were on the line or they're half over. I, I don't know of this particular case, but some of the sheds were, um, partially in the easement and partially on the Garrett Company property. If it was solely on her property in the easement, they would not have sent her a letter. They've only sent out letters to properties that are off, uh, of the property owner's property and encroaching on their property. But, uh, if it's a large enough shed, it could very well be both on the drainage easement and on their property. Uh, today, if you were to build the shed, would you have setbacks and site review? I can't speak to, uh, how the process worked before my time, but I assume they had a similar process at the time that would have been back to this.
All right, thank you. Do you have a question?
I did, Mr. Nelson, refresh my memory. I know that initially they were to, the Garrett agreed to a fence, but I thought that was changed then to be, or was it reversed?
No, we were saying initially they agreed to a mound and it was changed to a big fence.
It will be more of a, a wall than a fence. Um, and they have spoken to me that this is going to be the thing they tried to put up first, uh, to shelter the neighbors from some construction noise as well. So they are trying to, as far as I know, they're not committed to this, but they were going to try to put that up first, uh, to try to minimize any, uh, annoyance from the construction. But it is, uh, more like a wall than a fence.
And trying to be good neighbors.
Correct, and they, they do also have lines feeding as well.
So if, if this is set in, she says seventeen feet on her property line, is there any reason why they would be in her shed or on her shed or around her shed?
Just so we, just so we go about it, this shed is definitely a hundred percent on Garrett's side of the line, I can trust people.
You, you can't trust people? I'm sorry to tell you, I wish that we could. I know the Garrett Company did survey the property line, and I have reviewed the sheds and defenses that they have set and encroached onto their property, and I was in agreeance with them at the time. Just with this coming up at this meeting, I can't specifically speak to the shed or this property owner. But if you, you know, would like to reach out to the Garrett Company, they could also provide you with that survey.
Right, sir.
West Lucas nine-six-eight Maple Grove Drive. Uh, my property also backs up to the Garrett, uh, so-called Garrett property. Oliver Springs is the name of the housing addicted. I built my shed in nineteen ninety-nine. Put my addition on it in two thousand, which is barely over past my property line. But thirty-some-odd years ago, when I bought that property, I was told that there is a five foot, twenty-five foot alley, or, it's in an apple, we call them alley, y'all call them, uh, what do you say, access?
Easement.
Easement, an easement, I'm sorry, I forgot the word. But, uh, that's what I was told when we bought the property. And now, I guess, somebody sold that easement to Oliver Springs. Is that correct? No, no. How much of an easement is there back there behind my property?
I, I think it's still the, the twenty-five.
Oh, but I'm gonna tell you, they got their fence set right now at twenty feet from my property line. And in the first zoning, the gentleman wasn't here at the time, and he did it on a telephone conference. And he raised, uh, a little thing about, uh, going to be a twenty-five foot variance, and, uh, he said he, he definitely wanted it a thirty-eight foot from the property line. Now that's when I left the zoning hearing, the second time, and it was approved. But there's no way they're thirty-eight foot now from the property line. And as far as the drainage, uh, case, Ken is saying past the drainage gate. Somebody brought that up a while ago.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address the council at this time? All right, you're done, moving on. Uh, council miscellaneous business, CF ones. Sorry. Hopper, second. Mr. Bates, all in favor, say aye.
Aye, opposed. As unanimously. By Anderson Houser, real property being substantial compliance.
Motion, Mr. Hopper, second. Mr. Bates, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. As unanimously.
By the engagement, what's her personal property being substantial compliance?
Motion, Mr. Hopper, second. Mr. Bates, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. As unanimously.
By the E. H. Innovation Instruments, personal property being substantial compliance.
Motion, Mr. Hopper, second. Mr. Bates, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. As unanimously.
By Anderson Houser, personal property being substantial compliance.
Motion, Mr. Hopper, second. Mr. Bates, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. As unanimously.
By the E. H. Flotek, AG, personal property being substantial compliance.
Motion, Mr. Hopper, second. Mr. Bates, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. As unanimously.
By Rick, yeah, was, yeah, two, let's see, being substantial compliance.
Motion, Mr. Hopper, second. Mr. Bates, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. As unanimously.
By C. O. P. F. C. A. eighty-seven, right fifty-five North Grand Road, being substantial compliance.
Motion, Mr. Hopper, second. Mr. Bates, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. As unanimously.
By C. O. P. F. C. A. eighty-seven, ten fifty-five North Grand Road, being substantial compliance.
Motion, Mr. Hopper, second. Mr. Bates, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. As unanimously. Any other miscellaneous business from the council? In the name of corporation council?
Yes, sir.
Roller. Mr. Mayor.
All right, sir. Thank you, everyone.